Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Housing Authority for the City of Salem for Monday, July 27, 2020 to order. If the recorder will call the roll.
Vice Chair Kaiser absent. Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Liang?
Here.
Commissioner Osik?
Here.
Chair Hoi?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike? Commissioner Nordike?
Here. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
I'm sorry, I skipped right over the pledge. I'll do the, I'll reset the Pledge of Allegiance first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And you said no on the additions or deletions. Thank you. Do we have anybody who signed up for public comment for the Housing Authority? I'm going to take that as a no.
That's a no.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lewis, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Chair Hoi. I move the consent calendar as submitted.
Do you have a second?
I second it, although I will want to have a question of Director Oates at some point when she talks.
The recorder will call the roll.
Commissioner Osik?
Aye.
Chair Hoi?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kaiser is absent. Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nanki?
Aye.
Commissioner Liang?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Did you, Commissioner Anderson, did you want to speak, I'm sorry, did you want to speak on the consent agenda? Or was it on one of the information reports?
It's on both, and I, and I did talk to Commissioner, Commissioner Director Oates today on the Public Housing Authority Plan and Annual Capital Fund. I'm all for it, but there was a sort of intriguing part of it in there that talks about they are going to build replacement housing and demolish some other houses and converting some units. And I just would like if Ms. Oates could discuss this a little more and indicate how this is going to be helpful to providing affordable housing and low-income housing to folks of Salem.
Thank you. Perhaps we could have her do that under her information report since I already called for the vote.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you. I see we have no public hearings, no special orders of business. We have information reports, Ms. Oates.
Good evening. I am Nicole Oates. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. In tonight's program management report, you will find that S.H.A. is excited to announce we are nearing the completion of the new 37-unit permanent supportive housing complex called Redwood Crossings. This has been a highly anticipated and carefully planned out dream of Salem Housing Authority to provide for the Salem community. The process and research began many years ago, and then S.H.A. began to travel to other entities to, that are currently providing permanent supportive housing. We carefully reviewed their best practices, what to do, what not to do, and we sought out the perfect property to purchase located at 4107 Fisher Road Northeast with the assistance of City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency. We've worked with neighborhood associations, the U.R.A., and communication with the neighborhoods to bring this project to life. The building was vacant and originally construction started in 2011 and sat unfinished for many years. The building, which had no hope of seeing the finish line, has now been given renewed life for this neighborhood. Individuals will now have a place to call home, and the community itself will have another permanent supportive housing project. The property was designed as a care facility originally with 19 units onsite offices. S.H.A. followed through with their dream to turn this facility into 30 units of single-room occupancy permanent supportive housing, one one-bedroom full ADA unit, and through the generous partnership of Salem Health Foundation and Salem Health, six transitional respite units for Salem Healthcare Management Team. This project has also brought the ability for us to collaborate with many partners to help provide onsite services to individuals housed in this complex. S.H.A.'s pleased to partner with the team at Arches to bring services to individuals who will reside in the building. The Housing Authority worked diligently through the waiting, is currently working diligently through the waiting list of over nearly 150 individuals to fill this complex with safe and COVID-19 practices upon completion. We anticipate the building to be 50% occupied in August and by September fully leased up. Last week alone, 37 units of bedbug-resistant furniture arrived and was offloaded by S.H.A. staff. This furniture is specifically designed to help eliminate bedbug issues throughout our complex. There were also 37 microwaves, induction cooktops, and mini fridges that were unpacked and put into place carefully by our staff. The team continues to work tirelessly to ensure Redwood Crossings can open seamlessly and quickly. There are many partners that have helped make this complex a reality. There are five funding sources alone in this complex. The process has taken lots of time and commitment by S.H.A. staff and partners to provide this building to Salem and the community. The dedication to see this project through has been uplifting through this COVID-19 pandemic. So, any questions on Redwood Crossings?
Well, I just want to compliment you and thank you for that diligent work. This is an amazing project, and I'm so excited. And just for the public's knowledge, these individuals who will be living there, they're currently homeless. Is that correct?
Yes, the preference is chronically homeless, so they've been homeless for at least three years, if not more.
And they can stay there for how long?
This is permanent. They can stay. They can remain if the services are needed for them to stable throughout the rest of their time. That, this is a location they can go. If individuals stabilize in 12 months, they will receive a voucher, and they can move out into an irregular apartment complex. When we say SRO-style, single-room occupancy, this means that two units have one shared bathroom. Most single-room occupancy buildings are designed like a dorm with a single hallway dorm bathroom and a single cooking or refrigeration area. Each of these individual units have a kitchenette, and two units share one bathroom.
Excellent. Are there any questions from Ms. Oates on this?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, my question is, for the individuals who, let's just say that they, they're getting their resources and the services that they need, how do you assess when or if that they're ready to graduate? I don't know if that's the right word, to be eligible for a voucher and to move on? And the voucher that they'd be receiving, is that a voucher that they would be able to use at any apartment or location that accepts the voucher?
Yes. So, for your first question, the individuals themselves will assess and determine when they are capable and ready to move out of the building. This is a completely voluntary program. No one will say, at this point, you're ready to go, you need to move out. They need to make that choice themselves. And of course, the supportive services onsite will assist them in any manner in helping them locate another apartment when they want to move out of the complex. But that's an individual's choice. There's, there's no forcing or making that decision for them. We went with, we specifically designed Redwood Crossings with project-based voucher program. Project-based voucher means we have dedicated 37 vouchers from the Section 8 program to this complex. We actually had to apply, had to go through an entire process to even utilize our own vouchers in a property that's managed by us. With that said, after 12 months, they do have the capability to take that voucher and move, like any other Section 8 resident, to any apartment complex that will allow them to use it there.
Any other questions, Commissioner Liang?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Oates, maybe we could move on to the questions that Commissioner Anderson posed earlier?
Yes. So, so Counselor Anderson had contacted me about the PHA plan and wanted to discuss some of the comments regarding the demo disposition of, or older stock of public housing. So, some of that is by the decision of nature for us, for the Housing Authority. We have 87 scattered site units that are single-family dwellings that are scattered across Salem and Kaiser. Those units have aged nearly 40. Some of them are 40 or 50 years or even older. And that stock is becoming very difficult to manage long-term. Also, property management-wise, in order for us to, our expectations of being hard performers, making sure that we're out there, we're visible, we're helping our clients become self-sufficient, gaining access to anything they need, and we're stopping by the properties regularly. Having scattered site placements all throughout the city is very difficult to manage and keep up with that many of them. It was the decision to go ahead and transition to the, taking those off of our stock of public housing and transition that funding into be able to build more affordable housing in various locations throughout Salem. This just continues with our PHA plan, and it's back on it again so that we can make this a reality here in the future. There are two projects that are listed on there. One is Shelton Village, and the other is Glen Creek Apartments. Those were scheduled to be converted in our RAD Rental Assistance Demonstration Conversion. However, HUD declined our ability to make that happen or make that a reality. Those units are currently listed in a floodway, and they are, we are not authorized to spend any HUD or federal money to do renovations, rehabilitations, or capital improvements at that site with federally assisted funds. Therefore, we've been left with no choice but to have to eventually sell these projects off and rebuild in an area that meets their environmental concerns.
Does that answer your questions, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, it does. Thank you. I think I just wanted everybody to know that this is overall a very good thing, and I want to thank Nicole, you and your staff for your hard work on this. And I look forward, on both this and the project we just discussed, I really look forward to housing more and more people in our city who desperately need it. So, thank you for this good work.
Thank you.
And Ms. Oates, is there anything else you wanted to highlight from your program report?
There is one more thing that is not actually on the program management report, but we did want to highlight the fact that Salem Police Department assisted the Salem Housing Authority with the delivery of nearly 60 backpacks to children in the Salem and Kaiser community over this last past weekend. They helped us make that happen for Operation Lemonade in Camp Rosenbaum, which enabled my staff to be able to focus on Redwood Crossings. So, we truly appreciate the partnership and teamwork of Salem Police Department stepping in to help us with that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I had a quick one.
Yes. Commissioner Nordike?
Ms. Oates, thank you so much. I sincerely appreciate and always look forward to the updates on affordable housing projects in Salem. These projects are literally building hope for our community and for individuals who have been struggling, especially those chronically homeless, who, as you say, have been on the streets for three years. As, as you know, many have been on the streets much longer than that, 10 to 15 sometimes. And my question would be, if I wanted to take a tour of the Redwoods Crossing building to see it for myself, would I reach out to you? Because I'd love to take a closer look at the facility.
Great question, and probably should have added that in. We do anticipate a grand opening event for Redwood Crossings, probably maybe around August 10th timeframe. The date isn't settled, but we do anticipate putting that information out. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, we'll have to be very careful with this grand opening. We plan to have a virtual online tour as well as spots for individuals to sign up, no more than 10 individuals in the building at a time, to be able to take a tour with staff that can help describe all the great features of the building.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll look forward to that.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing nothing further on our agenda, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Salem Urban Renewal Agency for Monday, July 27 to order. If the recorder could please call the roll.
Board Member Kaiser is absent. Board Member Anderson?
Here.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Liang?
Here.
Board Member Osik?
Here.
Board Member Hoi?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Right. Thank you. Approval of additions. Are there any additions, Counselor Hoi?
No.
Okay, thank you. I have no one signed up for public comment. The consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Thank you.
And that consists of item 3.1A, the June 22, 2020 draft U.R.A. minutes, and item 3.3A, jury apartment development agreement between the Urban Renewal Agency and MWIC Jury LLC. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Very good. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Thanks. I had a discussion before the meeting with Counselor Hoi about whether or not I wanted to pull 3.3A, which is the jury house, just to get a further explanation. I'm all for it, but there was an issue about the percentages of affordable housing. Was it going to be 10% or 20%, and it came at 15? And Counselor Hoi assured me that Director Rutherford was going to address that anyway. So, I'd love to hear what she has to say, whatever the appropriate part of the agenda is.
Well, why don't we just go ahead right now? I see Director Rutherford's on the line here. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm very happy to address this. I also have Annie Gorski ready to speak about this as well. Annie had a key leadership role in the formation of this urban renewal area and in negotiating the development agreement. So, I'll give her an opportunity to speak to this as well. But just kind of tee that up, where we had last left this off was, at the time, we were approving the urban renewal area. You know, when we first started this discussion, it was with the goal of having 20% affordable unit. Then we saw some real spikes in construction. And working with the developer had to revisit the feasibility of obtaining 20% affordable units. And through our work session this last spring and the hearings related to the urban renewal area had left it at a point where they were going to work to try to fine-tune their construction estimates as much as they could, and then come back to us to negotiate the final number of units. So, I'm going to hand it over to Annie, and she can discuss that a little bit further with you and the details of the development agreement.
Good evening. Annie Gorski, Economic Development Manager. So, we did hold a pre-development meeting with the developer back in June. They received their construction bids, although construction is still high. The construction estimates were lower than expected. So, that's why they've come back, based on reviewing their performa and sharing that with us. The 36 units and the total rebate of just over $12 million over a 30-year period is where, you know, we're able to, to partner. The 36 is what they're able to, to make work, given the construction costs and the information they received back in June.
Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Gorski. My recollection was, at the time, we had, last had this discussion, the developer was hoping to aim, or not hoping, was believing that they would end up with only able to do 10% with the goal, and I see everybody's nodding their head with the goal, you know, the aspirational goal of 20. So, it seems like at 15, we moved from 24 units to 36 units out of that instead of our goal of 48. And I guess I'm asking you, Ms. Gorski, if you were satisfied after doing your review of their financials and their books and their bids and everything else, that this is the appropriate place to land?
Yes, I'm comfortable with it. I think we're, the city's still going to get a great project out of the, out of the partnership. And as we highlighted in the development agreement and the staff report, they're proposing to split those 36 units across the income ranges that we talked about. So, between that 40 and 80, I believe it is, 12, 12 units at each, at each income level. So, again, feel like we're reaching the needs and the, you know, that, that range of needs in the community as well.
And I think as we look at projects that we've seen in the Housing Authority and the cost of construction, frankly, I'm surprised that we did net more units, given the impacts of COVID on construction right now and demand for contractors and impact to supply chain for products. So, I, I think that netting an additional 5% in the time that we are in right now is a pretty good situation for us.
How are we looking on this project beginning to actually take off? I, I recall there were some issues involving plating and surveys, as well as now some utility easements. Where are we in getting this sorted out? This seems to have been a decade we've been working on this, getting this, that north campus redeveloped. What are we looking at now, do you think? Can they break ground in August? My understanding is that's the objective, is to get started then.
I can speak to that quickly, Kristin. I did speak with the developer this morning. There is a, an easement issue that the city surveyor has identified in his review. So, we're hoping to have a follow-up conversation on that this week. I think the hope is still that construction can occur this month.
Great. Great. Well, I hope, I hope it can. It would be terrible to miss a construction season if something fouls us up here after all these years working on this thing. So, very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. If you would call the roll.
Board Member Hoi?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Lewis?
Aye.
Board Member Liang?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Nanki?
Aye.
Board Member Kaiser's absent. Board Member Osik?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I don't have any other business, so I'll adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency. And call to order the Salem City Council meeting for Monday, July 27. If the recorder could please call the roll.
Counselor Kaiser's absent. Counselor Anderson?
Hard for me to say ditto when Counselor Kaiser doesn't go before me, so I'm present.
Counselor Nanki?
Ditto.
Counselor Liang?
Yep, here.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoi?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Righty. Counselor Hoi, any additions or deletions?
Yes, I move additions to the agenda.
Second.
Second, Counselor Anderson.
We have item 6. D, which is a planning administrative decision, a tentative petition to divide .45 acres into three parcels.
All righty. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Liang?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoi?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kaiser's absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Have a proclamation, which will be, will be presenting to Jenny Ammon, the Natural Resource Educator at the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District. Whereas the environmental artist Wyland, best known for his series of 100 monumental marine life murals, created the Wyland Foundation in 1993. And whereas nine years ago, a healthy competition for cleaner communities was initiated by the Wyland Foundation to encourage cities to care for its natural resources. And whereas the City of Salem continues to explore ways to reduce consumption of water and power and to inspire citizens, and whereas clean, safe, and sustainable water resources and supplies are vital to the City of Salem's economy, environment, and its people. And whereas the City of Salem, along with neighboring communities, can engage in efforts to become better environmental stewards, and whereas even the smallest reduction in consumption, if done by many, can make notable differences. Now, therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, hereby proclaim the month of August 2020 as Wyland Mayor's Water Conservation Challenge Month and urge all residents and businesses to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and further committing to the cause by joining me in signing up at mywaterpledge.com between August 1st and 31st, 2020, dated this 27th day of July, 2020. These hot days remind us again, just, and then, of course, the annual statesman journal drought story from Detroit. So, we usually have issues related to that. All righty.
Excuse me, Mayor. I believe we have someone here to receive the proclamation.
Where is she?
Ms. Ammon?
There she is. Jenny, you want to say something?
I just wanted to let you know that I've been with Marion Soil and Water Conservation District for two years, and one of the easiest partnerships to make was with the City of Salem. I partner with Deborah Top and Brandy Nelson, who just got married, so I'm blanking on her married name. But we do environmental education, and we do outreach for our urban and rural populations. And water is one of the biggest issues, no matter where we're talking, Salem or Iowa, where I'm from. But it is a big issue. So, I want to say thank you for you recognizing this, everyone on the screen that I can see. And I hope to keep partnering, and I hope we can continue beyond August 2020, conserving water and being a good conservation example.
Well, Jenny, here's your proclamation. It's here at my office. Just come on by. We'll get it to you. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a second.
Did we want to back up to public, to Counselor and City Manager comment?
Oh, I don't know. What do you think? Okay, let's do it. Anybody got any comments? Counselor Anderson, what do you got for us, buddy?
Well, actually, I had planned on not speaking, but I had the public speaking. I will say that I talked, I have some matters with the consent calendar that, again, I'll just be speaking to after their move. They're not things that I, I'm in favor of. I just want a little more explanation.
Sure.
No, I think, Mr. Mayor, it's probably better that I don't talk because I've been concerned lately about the national situation, and it's just better that I not say anything at this point.
If you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all, is that?
That's why I'm not saying anything.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all virtually once more. It is extremely warm in this room. I don't have air conditioning in this room, so I haven't, I'm not melting yet. But it's wonderful to see you all today. I just wanted to make a quick comment on something. I chatted with the city attorney beforehand because I wanted to be careful with what we say and not say. I wanted to just briefly recognize the fact that we've received a great deal of comment on the Costco project. And I want to remind folks that all timely comments are And I want to remind folks that all timely comments are being considered, but obviously this is not the time or place for us to discuss in detail. The only thing I want to make sure people understand is that there's a reason that we city councilors cannot respond individually to all of your email. I don't know about you, but it can feel awfully rude when you send an email to someone and that person doesn't even respond or acknowledge your email. Normally, that would be very rude indeed, but I just want to remind folks that because of the ex parte land use rules, which are a creature of both state law and city code, we cannot respond to your comments at this time. So please recognize that as we as a council continue to receive a great deal of public comment within the timeframe, we can read those to a certain point, but we can't respond. So please do not take my non-response as a disinterest in this matter. I would also remind folks that on the city's website, on the main page, there is a big discussion of this topic. It says, "What's happening with the Keebler Gateway Shopping Center?", question mark. I highly recommend everyone click on that link. If you want to see how we got here and why we're in the position that we're at, and the fact that the city council has only a very narrow decision to make at this time, that explains all of that information for you, including the fact that the Court of Appeals and the Land Use Court of Appeals have already weighed in on this. So that really narrows the decision that's before council in the future. So thank you all for your engagement with us, and again, I am sorry that I'm unable to respond directly to you, but as a matter of state law and city code, we're not permitted to respond to your messages. So thank you for your input and your engagement, and please by all means, check out the city website for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, for your explanation of that. I know we all have been receiving emails and appreciate you calling out the reason, hopefully nobody's responding yet at this point. Okay? Anyone else have any comments? Mr. City Manager, oops, Dan, did your hand go up?
Yes, Dan Atchison, City Attorney. Just real briefly, I just wanted to let the councilors know that we're going to be putting a rule in place on your emails that's going to provide an automatic response to folks who send you emails with terms including Costco and that trust, so at least they will have that response if it's not a solution to the response.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to shift focus to policing and share with council an update on several policing initiatives. First, the request for proposals for a performance audit of the police department has been issued. Proposals are due August 10th. Per the city's purchasing policies, a selection committee of internal and external stakeholders using objective criteria will select the firm most responsive to the request, and that request includes the areas of interest identified by city council. Second, staff are working on the information for the work session requested by city council regarding the city, specifically the police department's response to non-criminal matters. The work session will be in September. The exact date has yet to be set because of the Labor Day holiday and the city's volunteer recognition event, so please stay tuned, and we'll get a specific date for you. Chief Moore could have left us in 2019. Thankfully, he agreed to my request to continue working in 2020. The recruitment has started for Chief Moore's replacement. Applications for Salem's next police chief will be accepted until August 24th. I'll have information for council on process later. And the last policing issue is from Chief Moore. Chief Moore has an update for you on school resource officers, so please, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, and Mayor Bennett and members of city council. I know you may already have some of this information, but I wanted to provide you a little bit more, other than the city manager's email. Following a variety of internal discussions, as well as many discussions with Superintendent Perry, I have advised her that the department is going to take a pause on assigning officers to the schools this year. This should not be interpreted as me saying I don't think officers in the schools isn't important, because I truly believe that it's probably one of our best ways to build relationships with our young people in this community in a location where we can do that. With that said, however, I believe it is prudent on our behalf to take notice of the testimony provided to the school board recently, including that of some of our African-American, Hispanic, Pacific Islander, and Native American students who are concerned by our mere presence in the schools. Ignoring that testimony, I believe without further discussion and examination would not be the best way to proceed. Our officers would like to do the things that school officers are intended to do. Mentor and develop relationships with the young people, provide classroom education where it's appropriate, and certainly provide public safety in a fashion the schools and our students are comfortable with. Unfortunately, current staffing availability with the school officers is often being used for investigations where our students themselves have been victims of crimes. And our ability to maintain unobligated time for mentoring, relationship building, and having time for students often doesn't exist. It is our intent to work with the schools, their students, and our community to examine our current program and determine what changes to the program might be appropriate and appreciated. When that is complete, I will come back to you with suggestions regarding the future of the school officer program.
Thank you, Chief. I will tell you, I think we're all looking forward to having a work session on this issue and having, sharing ideas, sharing information, listening to you and members of the public as well on this issue. It's certainly one of very high interest in throughout the community and specifically in certain parts of the community and in certain schools where there's been some real reaction to the program. Really look forward to having a really fulsome discussion on this.
Thank you.
Thank you for this approach. I think this is a really wise and very responsive decision. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead with public comment now. I've got five people signed up, one on the agenda and four on non-agenda items. No, if there's no objection, I'm going to go ahead and have all five folks testify now. So I'm going to move ahead. Any objection? All right. Steve Anderson.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Councilor. Steve Anderson, 3240 Geller Road Northwest, regarding item 3.3B and 3.3G. Last meeting, a council was upset when he thought a personal attack was aimed at him. However, when it was learned that this was directed at a citizen, not a council, this body sat silent. This personal attack on a citizen by a city employee in a public meeting is unacceptable. I'm not evil, wicked, nefarious, and your silence endorsed this defamation. I have worked in this city doing good, building bridges and have understandings. Some may know of my national work for the poor and communities of color. I am in no way nefarious. I've worked with Peter Fernandez for over 15 years on the Water Waste Water Task Force. I deeply respect Peter and his work in behalf of our city, yet I know that we all don't get it right all the time. Also, that the council must rely on experts. However, experience is taught to trust, but verify in such decision-making. This matter turned on ignoring approved city council policy and the rule of law. However, no council asked for advice from the city attorney, nor clarification. That was interesting. All things are said are important. Professional experience and training, including expert witness assignments, has taught me to say what is meant and say what is not meant to frame the decision-making discussion clearly. An example, twice the question was asked about the understanding Marine Drive alignment. Twice it was stated, yes, Fifth Avenue North. This is example of what is not being said being important. Councilor Kaisers' June 29 motion, it's a 10, and approval was to clearly purchase from Fifth Avenue at Camiot and River Bend. At two hours and 32 minutes into the discussion, Council Lewis stated, quote, "To purchase the right of way from Fifth..." This is to purchase the right of way from Fifth Avenue at Camiot North, close quote. Yet staff stands with the Fifth Avenue declaration. This has been raised many times. There's a clear misunderstanding here with little effort to resolve. It does not connect Marine Drive with the West Salem Business District. I have submitted a map that shows this. It excludes four properties and about 600 feet of right of way. At the time of the Tavon property purchase, other Marine Drive alignments from Point B to outside the UGB towards the Walsh Marine Park were surveyed. July 1st, a letter with two property owners announced the Fifth Avenue North alignment survey. However, the Fifth Avenue at Camiot Lake has been silent. This is a good example where not stating all the facts is important. Raising a similar issue brought a personal attack against me by a city employee. So when a city employee in a public meeting personally attacks a citizen, defaming him, and this council sits silent, this is unacceptable. For the record, I am not wicked, evil, unlawful, nefarious. And I do support city staff on a lot of issues, and I find they do a lot of good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Steve. Steve Anderson, I was the councilor who got upset, because I thought that the characterization by Director Fernandez was directed at me, because he said, "Mr. Anderson," which our names are very familiar, and it wasn't. And I will tell you, sir, that I have felt bad about this situation since then, because had I not been confused, I would have apologized to you on part of the city. I appreciate the fact that you have done very good, excellent work over the years for doing what you believe is in the best interest of the city. And I, and I believe other councilors, have no question about your motives on anything, and I appreciate the work you have done. And so on behalf of the city, I'm sorry that you were called nefarious, and I think you have every right to be concerned about that, because it's not true. So thank you for your service, Steve.
Well, thank you. And I did learn something in this. I know that in hearings, the conversation is pointed, and debate over issues sometimes is challenging. And I promise that in the future, I will try to be more humble in how I choose my words, because I do respect the work of council. But when I do see a point that I disagree with, or see it is not in interest of the city, I will raise it. So I do appreciate that, and if there's an apology needed, I will apologize, but I was not nefarious.
Anyone else? Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Mayor, this is Brad Nanki.
Oh, hi, Brad.
Just to comment to Steve Anderson, because our history goes back, almost closing in on 30 years now, and I want to thank you for your work with the Water Waste Water Task Force, as well as our work way back in the day on the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Well, thank you, Brad, and I've appreciated working with you. I appreciate your insights and your ability to sort through the issues and get to the heart of the matter. So thank you, Brad.
Thank you, and thanks for testifying tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Hey, Steven Van Pelt.
Good evening. Let me start my video. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Yeah, so my name is Steven Van Pelt. I am a resident of Ward Eight. I've lived in Salem for 12 years and West Salem for five. I would like to thank the city council today for taking the time to hear this testimony. Upon request by the city, additional documentation will be provided to support this testimony in regards to unethical and discriminatory actions taken by the officers of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. Neighborhood associations were established to provide a collective voice of neighborhood residents. They are intricately linked to the city government and city decisions. For example, West Salem Neighborhood Association provides comments and support, or lack of support, on pending actions that affect West Salem prior to a vote by the city council. To quote the city of Salem's website, their page on neighborhoods, "Strong communities are built on strong neighborhoods where people work and live together." Unfortunately, this is not a current reflection of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. Several concerned residents and business owners of West Salem, myself included, and the undersigned on this statement I'm reading, believe that each member of the West Salem Neighborhood Association's executive committee, including the chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary, have all committed ethics violations according to the city of Salem Code, Section 12, as well as acted in an authoritarian and discriminatory manner contrary to our democratic system. Public officials are bound to observe in their official acts the highest standards of morality and to discharge faithfully the duties of their office regardless of personal consideration, considering that the public interest must be their primary concern. Their conduct in both their official and private affairs should be above reproach. Members of the West Salem Neighborhood Association Executive Committee have sent out discriminatory messages through the association's Facebook page and made racist comments and homophobic slurs. Officers of the West Salem Neighborhood Association are actively and intentionally limiting the ability of other voices to be heard by excluding them from social media, discussions at public meetings, and falsely citing West Salem Neighborhood Association bylaws. They have conducted themselves unprofessionally and created an unsafe environment for community participation. The association's bylaws state that the chairperson will be responsible to form an ethics committee upon complaints brought forward. However, there is a conflict of interest for any member of the executive committee to appoint an ethics committee to investigate themselves. Because of the gross mixed conduct by the Neighborhood Association's executive committee, we are asking the city to step in and facilitate a mediated forum for West Salem Neighborhood Association members to voice their opinions, so a decision can be made as to how best to move forward. As the issuer of the charter to the Neighborhood Association, this failing to act leaves the city open to liability, and I really feel the city needs to take action to protect itself. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Van Pelt. Any questions? Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, actually, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to get a response from the city attorney on what exactly steps can be taken and what Mr. Van Pelt or others can do to help resolve their issue.
Thank you, Dan Atchison, City Attorney. So neighborhood associations, the city's position on neighborhood associations is they are not public bodies, so they're not subject to public records or public meetings laws, nor are they subject to the city's ethics chapter, which applies to public officials of the city. About two years ago, I believe, the West Salem Neighborhood Association, in their bylaws, adopted the city's ethics code to govern their own membership. They're welcome to do that, but that doesn't mean they're automatically public officials, and it doesn't mean that the city is now the regulatory body over their ethical conduct. So the city has no regulatory role in this matter. Our only role is to do an annual recognition of neighborhood associations, and I believe the West Salem Neighborhood Association annual renewal is due in October or November.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Atchison, if I could just inquire further, so what I'm hearing you say is that basically the only thing that this council could do is to essentially not renew their charter and not recognize them as a neighborhood association when it's time for renewal, is that correct?
Our role is a regulatory role, if you want to put it that way, I guess I put it that way, is that we, they come to us every year for annual recognition as one of our neighborhood associations. And the council's discretion at that point is to renew them or not renew them. If the city wanted to be involved in some sort of guidance on a mediation or something like that, that's outside of our mandate, but we could do that.
Well, I think it would be beneficial. I mean, we rely on our neighborhood associations to inform us, to be, you know, basically be conduits between council and the city and the residents, and it serves us to have well-functioning neighborhood associations. And this issue seems to, I don't know it intimately, but I keep hearing about it repeatedly. There's certainly a lot of concern in the community about it, and one way that it needs to get resolved, or we're going to have only one option, come time to consider renewal, and I would hate to see that happen. But if something doesn't happen to resolve it, I don't know what choice we'll have. So I would encourage the city to take a more active role in helping to resolve this.
Councilor Nordike. Councilor Nordike?
I agree with Councilor Hoy. The Neighborhood Associations have a great deal of discretion. They weigh in on land use issues. They weigh in on a wide variety of neighborhood concerns. So we absolutely need well-functioning Neighborhood Associations. And when that is the association that is supposed to represent thousands of people all within one neighborhood, how their leadership behaves reflects on everybody else. So I've heard quite a few rumors myself. This is the first time I've heard someone step forward. And I believe Mr. Van Pelt said that, he says that there have been homophobic slurs, discriminatory messages, and so on. If that is true, that is completely unacceptable. And everyone should feel welcome at a Neighborhood Association meeting, no matter where they come from, no matter who they are. And on the one hand, I fully recognize the fact that they're not, we don't have the regulatory authority, as the city met, the city attorney pointed out. I totally get that. But if a mediation would be helpful to ensure that people feel welcome and have a safe space at their own Neighborhood Association, particularly when there are allegations of discriminatory conduct happening from their leadership, that is cause for concern for me, and I think we should look into a mediation. I just don't think that is acceptable at all. And without knowing anything further about it, I think it's worth digging deeper and finding out because we want everyone to be able to participate through their Neighborhood Associations. We want everyone to be welcome. This is a city of peace, and we must reflect that and do what we can in our limited capacity to encourage all of our Neighborhood Associations to be warm, welcoming, and inclusive to all points of view. Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councillors Hoy and Nordike. And I also appreciate Councilor Lewis's indication that we need to do something about this. And I'm sorry that Counselor Kizer wasn't here because tonight wasn't able to be here because part of her ward is in West Salem as well. And I too have heard many rumors. And I actually have spoken about this in other council meetings when various ways the, the Neighborhood Meeting was run over particular issues that caused a lot of emotional angst on both sides. And I'm speaking of the bridge issue. There were some, there were some real problems there, and I pointed them out in one of the council meetings. So it sure seems to me that if our, if the only thing that we can do as, as a council either, either approve a charter or not approve a charter, those are pretty much black and white choices. They're, they're, it's a zero-sum game. So if we're gonna be faced with this sort of stuff, I think that we need to have some sort of investigation and fact-finding and potential mediation. And I want to thank Mr. Van Pelt for coming here tonight that I'm sure at some great potential personal cost to himself. So thank you for coming, and, and I think we ought to move forward in some fashion on this.
Yeah, I'm.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Nanki.
Who's that, Nanki? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And to standard follow, or to follow standard protocol, if either one of the councillors representing Ward Eight would want to have us do something, since it will take more than an hour of staff time, they could bring a councillor motion at, at our next meeting.
Counselor? Yeah, thank you, Counselor Nanki. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I, I'll make a suggestion. And, and I, I have a, a belief that the Neighborhood Associations really are independent, that they're there for purpose, but, but they're independently run. And so I would recommend that West Salem Neighborhood Association contact Neighbor to Neighbor, which is a mediation service here in Salem. See if they could be of any support. The issue will need to be worked out amongst the folks in the Neighborhood Association, not, not competing against each other, but working together to resolve the issues. And so that's a mediation service that is here existing in Salem, and I think they could help.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well, Mr. Van Pelt, thank you very much. Appreciate you bringing this up. I've, I've heard about this one. There's two other Neighborhood Associations I get regular complaints about as well. Not quite as, as graphic, but certainly is troublesome. So maybe we can put together three or four Neighborhood Associations that need some help out there, or individuals on them that need it. But thank you again for coming in.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Stats, and I'm a resident of Salem and a local business owner of West Salem. I reside in Ward One, and I conduct a business in both Ward One and Ward Eight. My comments are also in regards to the West Salem Neighborhood Association, and I would like to thank the council for hearing our comments today in regards to the Neighborhood Association. The leaders of the West Salem Neighborhood Association have the responsibility to ensure that meetings are conducted with the appropriate decorum and that our official representatives comply with the city's codes of ethics and conduct in all messaging and actions. This would include an expectation that our leaders, our leadership is open and unafraid to listen to the ideas and concepts, perspectives, dissonance, and opposition from any member of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. It's crucially important, important that each and every one of us accept and demonstrate that all voices are truly equal and that we set the example not only listen, but to be inclusive of diverse cultures and perspectives. I agree with the previous testimony provided by Stephen Van Pelt. In addition, I find it appalling that a statement calling for Black Lives Matter protesters to be, quote, "tied to a tree and whipped," unquote, was posted by a West Salem Neighborhood Association Executive Committee member. Our public officials, including those in leadership positions in the West Salem Neighborhood Association, should conduct themselves in accordance with their positions. They are to be held to a higher standard. Again, because the city has issued the charter for this association to operate as its neighborhood advisor to the West Salem area, the city must take action to investigate the ethics violations and mediate a resolution that is inclusive to everyone. That concludes my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stats. Appreciate it. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I guess I first have, first of all, Mr. Stats, thank you for coming in. And if in fact those remarks were made, whether you're a person in a position of responsibility in a neighborhood group or not, they're deplorable. And they should be castigated strongly. My question is for the city attorney. I understand that they're a separate, independent organization, and I understand that they are not bound by city statutes and ethics and other things. But, Mr. Atchison, you said they voluntarily adopted it. So if they voluntarily adopted the ethical standards, are they bound for, bound by that? And is that something we should consider? And I will also, before, I'll take your answer off the air, Dan, but I also want to say that, that this is just more information and makes it more clear to me that we need to look at something here, and we need to have some sort of discussion. And a broader than, why don't we all just get together and try to work it out and sing kumbaya? I mean, we need to have some sort of different, more broad discussion. And I agree with Counselor Nanki. It'll take more than our city council time. So that should be a motion coming from either of the councillors who represent that ward. But I'd be interested in your response to whether or not the West Salem Neighborhood Association executives, officers are bound by their own adopted ethical code.
So again, what I, my understanding is that they adopted our Ethics Chapter as part of their bylaws. So to the extent that their bylaws govern their conduct, yes. But those bylaws are enforced by the association, not by the city.
Counselor Lewis, I, I hope after this discussion, perhaps you and Counselor Kizer could speak over the next several days in advance of the next meeting and maybe come up with an approach to deal with the, the issues raised this evening or, or some suggestion on how we could proceed. Maybe talking with Mr. Atchison and the city manager, maybe you could come back to us. This is your ward, your neighborhood, and, and you're going to be, you're going to have the sensitivities probably needed to, to bring this forward if it's going to move forward. I, I think we are hearing very, very legitimate concerns. I've heard about this now for some time, and it's, it's one that is not going to go away. So I think we better make sure we have a, a plan in place as to how we're going to proceed. Would that be okay with you?
Yes.
Great. Appreciate that. Okay, you might grab Counselor Hoy for assistance as well. He looks like he'd be interested. Okay? Mr. Stats, thank you very much.
I had a question.
Oops, sorry, Counselor Nordike.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stats, thank you again for your testimony. The fact that we have multiple individuals coming forward to us tells me that there is something seriously wrong going on here. This is starting to sound more like a call for help from the cit, from, to the city, from these residents. So on the one hand, while the Neighbor to Neighbor program sounds like it could have promise, I'm concerned that you have to come in good faith to have, to have good mediation as something that I know from my day job. So I'm concerned as to whether that will be adequate or not. So I look forward to hearing back from both Councillors Lewis and Kizer. They're the ones who attend these meetings as far as I know, and certainly know West Salem far better than I do. So I will be looking forward to see what they come up with in response to this. My question is, don't the Neighborhood Associations receive money from the city to fund their programming? This might be a question for staff.
A small amount. They do, I think, receive, and they've received support. Irma Dowd, we have in charge of our neighborhood services as well as Brady Adam, or Brady Rogers. So, yeah, there's an investment there. Oh, there's Norman.
Yeah, hi, Mayor. Norman Wright, Community Development Director. They do receive a small amount of money, and that money is portioned out in accordance to work that they do every year to attend our meetings, to participate in a variety of functions that are about coordinating various efforts across all the Neighborhood Associations. And so that money typically is used for support efforts in the administrative functions that they all employ, whether it be for sending out newsletters or even, in some cases, just to pay for the copies of, of those newsletters or the maintenance of their websites. So it is a small amount, and it again is typically for administration.
Norman, could you assist Lewis and Kizer as well? I mean, maybe you, you or your people help them out on this if they need any assistance on this? Would that?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, Counselor Nordike. It sounds like you had something more to say. Oh, okay. Yeah, and, and I'd also, I'll just add, there's a couple of them, couple of others where I'm getting complaints over a variety of things, including, this would be the second one with Facebook page issues. I'm a little concerned about how that's going. I, I, I hope you can take a look at this. I, I maybe be a little more comprehensive. At the same time, you deal specifically with this issue, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, we certainly are doing our best to try to build capacity with each of these groups. And some are certainly more advanced than others, but we're going to work our best on all three.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else for Mr. Stats? Counselor Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stats, I'm very sorry for what has happened, specifically in the Neighborhood Association and the continuous, it sounds like, attacks on community members and the feeling of unsafe and unwelcoming space set. The Neighborhood Association, it's like the opposite of a Neighborhood Association. I, I'm, I sit on three different Neighborhood Associations, but because of scheduling, I could only attend mostly two because of one of them's in the middle of the morning when I'm at work. And, you know, Neighborhood Association should be a welcoming space for us to get to know one another, to be able to, you know, learn about what's happening with the community without feeling like they are being separated from one another. You had mentioned that there was a, a Neighborhood Association officer who had posted flyers. Was it posted along streets in West Salem or on Facebook or a combination of both?
Thank you for the question. It is specific to comments on Facebook from members of the Executive Committee. One particular member specifically that has made both comments and private messages through Facebook.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Okay. All right, Mr. Stats, thank you again very much.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'd like to start off by thanking you, Mayor Bennett, and members of the council for hearing me today. My name is Dee Howden, and I live in Ward One of Salem. I did submit an expanded written testimony about this. I do want to apologize ahead of time, Mayor Bennett. In my anxiety to get my testimony submitted in, I left the second T off of your name.
Oh, no.
Apologizing ahead of time, you will notice that.
I don't have the say. Anderson's always getting a no instead of a nee. I feel blessed to only lose one T.
Perfect. So today, I'm here in support, as I was on, on June 22nd, in support of the work the council is doing around systemic racism in our community, specifically supporting removing SROs from schools, shift in police response and police accountability. I do want to say thank you to Counselor Young, Counselor Nordike, Counselor Anderson, and Counselor Hoy for all the measures that you've brought forward. I came forward to that meeting because I was encouraged by the measures being brought forward to get involved. I've had a lot of anxiety being involved in local politics up until this point. And at this point, seeing those measures was enough to bring me forward to speak out and support. I was nervous, as I am. I don't know if there are less nerves the more you testify. I'm waiting for that moment. But you all helped me feel at ease in that moment with your response, and I thank you for that. I know you were under a lot of pressure to pass a budget that night, and then also had very suddenly a lot of eyes from the community on the work you were doing. So I want to recognize that as well. I do also want to acknowledge that some of what I saw in that meeting was disheartening. I did stay on the meeting for the entire time, and there was quite a bit of belittling comments and condescending remarks made towards and, and with regards to what citizens were bringing forward, specifically by Mayor Bennett and some other council members. And again, I do recognize there was a lot of pressure in those moments. But I would like to take a moment to, to just acknowledge that with you right now, specifically, Mayor Bennett. You did continually make some snide and condescending remarks throughout the meeting, even after the public testimony. In your responses, I heard you speak in shock at the lack of knowledge of citizens, the lack of understanding that they had. You continually delegitimized and dismissed what people had shared based on technicalities and lack of understanding of city budgets and authority. And with all respect, that's not our job to understand those technicalities. That's the role that you ran for. So your job is to hear our voices, to hear our concerns, and distill those down into those policies and those actions. And I do want to acknowledge also that the people who are most heavily impacted by systemic racism and discrimination in social services are going to have potentially the least access to the knowledge of what those systems look like, and their voices should not be discounted because of that. In that meeting, I did see you use your position of power to silence the voices that were coming forward and dismiss them. And we, it was very clear that you were uncomfortable with the perspectives. And at the time, it, we could only assume that you disagreed with the perspectives themselves. Also, it was disconcerting because these measures were brought forward by the members of your council. So in dismissing those So in dismissing those voices, you were also dismissing your own council members. I do want to say that I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing in this meeting. I also have been very encouraged, I've seen some of your interactions with Jonathan Jones, the owner of Epilogue, in the past, that have been less positive and more dismissive. I also was watching the meeting on the 13th for the city council, and I saw a very different response in you with Jonathan. So I want to speak to the growth that I'm seeing. I've seen your response here tonight with Stephen Van Pelt and Jason Stats, taking those very seriously. So I just want to speak to that and say, you know, you've asked for community involvement for years, and there is a lot of people wanting to get involved. I know I'm not alone in that. And so I just ask, we all saw the way we were treated, the way others were treated on that, on that night. And if you want people to come forward, there needs to be a creation of respect and openness for people sharing their perspectives, even though we may not all understand specifically how all of this works. So I just want to speak to that, just want to acknowledge we're seeing growth and just ask that that continues. We're excited to be involved, I believe. I know I can only speak for myself, I'm excited to be here, as intimidating and as nerve-wracking as it is, and I want to stay involved, and I do believe you want us to be involved as well. So it's both a, a calling to that and also a thank you for the growth I'm seeing.
Well, great. Well, thank you, Danielle. I appreciate, appreciate your thoughts on this and certainly take them to heart. Thank you very much. Any questions? Corey Poole?
I had just one comment, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dee. Thank you for coming to the last few meetings and also for, you know, speaking up. I mean, that's one of the things that we constantly would love to be able to see within our community, community engagement, being able to share their perspectives. I mean, we do receive emails from folks, and it's also appreciated, but then also be able to interact with people, whether it's in person or over Zoom like we are right now. Like, these are different ways that we engage with our community. So thank you for stepping up and for being here within this space.
Thank you for making it possible and for making it feel as, as good as we can. Again, it is pretty intimidating. I have enjoyed seeing your faces, which is why I felt it was important to show up in, in person. I know Counselor Leon, I've seen you multiple times, and Tom Anderson as well. So I appreciate the time and, and for you listening to, to my perspective. And again, when you do read through my written statement, I do ask that you put it inside of the context of me seeing some of that growth here tonight. And it, it really is just a call to, like, us all doing better and navigating this together. So I appreciate the time.
Great. Thank you very much. Corey Poole?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't think I can do video. Start my video. Here we go. Hey, there we are. Hi. I'm going to attempt a screen share here. Yes. Sorry, I'm not, not as versed in Zoom as maybe I should be. Oh, I, I cannot screen share.
You want to describe it?
Well, it's just, oh, wait, here we go. Well, it looked like I could for a second. Let me try. Nope, can't do it. I was going to show slides while I spoke of the situation at hand at Cascade Gateway Yeah, I can't screen share. Oh, well, I will just go ahead and read.
Mr. Mayor, this is Brad Nanki. Yeah, that has to be approved by the meeting host, so maybe staff could allow that to happen.
Okay, I will now attempt. It keeps acting like I can. Hey, look at that, I can do it.
There you go. Thank you.
Fantastic. Hurrah! All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. My name is Corey Poole. I'm the Chair of the SEMCA Neighborhood Association. I'm speaking on behalf of the Neighborhood Association this evening. We've worked closely with the city and park staff for many years to help make Cascades Gateway Park. Oh, this is Ward Two, by the way. My business is at 3100 Turner Road on Southeast Turner, in Southeast Salem. We've worked closely with the city and the park staff for many years to make Cascades Gateway Park a destination park for all of Salem's residents. With efforts to build the disc golf course, a dog park, improved fishing day use facilities, and other things, we're proud of what we've accomplished in Salem's third-largest park to make it a welcoming place for all Salem residents. Since council voted to move Salem's homeless population into Wallace Marine Park and Cascade Gateway Park, the neighbors and the parks have suffered. As some of you know firsthand after touring Cascade Gateway Park, thank you for coming, we have seen large increases in garbage, derelict vehicles, aggressive dogs, aggressive individuals, fires, destruction of park trees, and most troubling, a large spike in theft and trespass in the community surrounding the park. We thank our police, code enforcement, and park staff for their great efforts in attempting to address some of these concerns, but the problems are overwhelming. The decision to concentrate the homeless population into these two parks was made without consulting the affected neighborhood associations. The plan was also not given the necessary resources to implement the stated objectives. This policy has not resulted in the homeless community, in the homeless community's social distancing, placing this population into an area with no bus service and few other services has not benefited the homeless population. Combined with the inability for the police to patrol the areas where the homeless are camped, has created a situation where the homeless population are forced to police themselves. I've spoken with many of the homeless individuals in Cascade Gateway Park. Many do not feel safe. There are no-go areas in the park. It is pitch black at night. There are currently places in the park where even the police do not feel comfortable going. How can this be helping our most vulnerable populations, both in the homeless community and the surrounding senior communities? We on the SEMCA board appreciate the complexities of the homeless problem and understand there are no easy solutions, that Salem will be dealing with this chronic homeless problem for the foreseeable future. We do not want to simply move our current problems to some other neighborhood. So it, it is not fair to impose this homeless problem on any one, two, or three neighborhoods. Any real solution will need to be citywide. And with that in mind, the SEMCA board has passed the following resolution. Fair and equitable treatment for all Salem property owners and residents should be given with regard to homelessness. The functionality of each city park must be maintained until a solution is found for the homeless camping in Cascades Gateway Park and Wallace Marine Park. Provision should be made to allow homeless camping in all city parks. Allowing homeless camping in all city parks would spread this homeless population throughout our city. It would decrease the social conflict that can incur when the homeless population is forced into close proximity to, to one another. This would also allow for services to be provided at the neighborhood level across many churches and neighborhood organizations, rather than trying to concentrate these services into a handful of overburdened service providers. We request that you move to implement this change immediately, before people are seriously injured or more property and natural habitat is damaged or stolen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Poole?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Nanki.
Nanki.
Yeah, I just want to thank Corey for his testimony tonight, and I know I've been out there touring, and, and it is an issue for their neighborhood association. And just wanted him to know that we're sympathetic, and, and I'll be contacting you as well, and we'll have some further discussion.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Corey, thanks for coming, and I also appreciated the tour that you gave me and other counselors, along with various people in the city administration. I guess my question, Corey, is, these pictures were taken at the end of April, and that's, I think, about when we were, we were all there, and now it's three months later. In your view, is it better? Is it worse? Is it stayed the same?
Yeah, they, late April, early March would be the, the pictures that were taken there. I would say it is better, and this is largely credited to the enormous effort from our police force and code enforcement. I've been told by code enforcement that they've been spending an average of five hours a day in the park, trying to keep it all under control. Police make numerous visits to the park daily, and we cannot thank them enough. The police have also been making extra patrols in the surrounding neighborhood. Whether these have helped significantly or not, I can't say, but they are most welcome. I've heard from many residents that they feel better knowing the police are coming through with some regularity. We continue to have trespass, we continue to have theft, we continue to have, frankly, mentally unstable individuals being violent in our, in our neighborhood. It's, it's really quite frightening. One other reason why I haven't included many newer pictures is because I've been threatened on three different occasions by people in the park for taking pictures, once with a machete in hand. So at this point, I don't feel comfortable taking pictures. So, you know, I would, again, welcome anybody to come walk the park with me, and I'll show you firsthand, there are parts in the park where even I will not tread. It is far too dangerous in some parts of the park. Some of the homeless, as the police have verified to me, are, are so aggressive that even the police will not go into those areas easily.
Well, thank you very much for your concern and what you're doing for your neighborhood and the folks there, and, and we appreciate being brought to our attention. And if we had a magic wand, we'd certainly wave it, but, but please keep the pressure on us, because this is a problem that is way, way beyond your park and the city of Salem and everything else. And it, it's very hard for us at the local level to have any kind of coordinated response when it, it's really coming down from the top down to us. But so thanks, Corey, and please keep, keep doing this.
Hey, anyone else? Thank you, Corey, very much.
Thank you.
Hey. The consent calendar, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm of approval of the consent calendar.
Why not?
Oh, Nanki beat you. No, who wasn't? Lewis?
Nanki.
Nanki, okay.
Nanki.
All right, we have item 3.1A, the July 13th, 2020 draft city council minutes. Item 3.2A, transfer of fiscal year 2021 general fund budget appropriations. Item 3.3A, memorandum of understanding with the Salem Area Mass Transit District. Item 3.3B, purchase and sale agreement with Robert and Suzanne Kramer for acquisition of real property. Item 3.3C, 2020 transportation and growth management grant program application for urban trails implementation plan. Item 3.3D, intergovernmental agreement with Marion County. Item 3.3E, Eagles View Park master plan. Item 3.3F, lease amendment for property located at 960 Liberty Street Southeast to expand City of Salem Employee Health Clinic. Item 3.3G, an order for city council review of an appeal of system development charge expenditure. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Hey, any discussion? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I, I chose not to pull these items because I'm in favor of them, but I just want to say that item 3.2A about the transfer of funds, that's related to what we've been talking about earlier here, because it's the cash-for-trash sort of thing, and it looks to me like that program is having some success, albeit maybe not on a broad enough scale. So that's great. Second item I want to contact is the purchase of the Right-Away, which is 3.3B, which goes back to last week's, last meeting and what Mr. Anderson was saying today. This purchase, the Right-Away, is for Marine Drive, north of, of Taven Street and north of where Fifth Street cuts into it, and that's a very appropriate use of, of the transportation mon, funny. I was trying to say money and fun together, but funnies, and it's, it's a good deal, and that's exactly, so that's moving in the right way. And finally, I want to say that the, the grant for the application for urban trails implementation is terrific and wonderful. So kudos to all these things.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Leon?
I'm supposed to say aye to this, right? Just so I'm the right statement?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm an aye except for 3.3G, we're out. Guess I'll say no or nay.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer is absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. One no on, as, as noted by Counselor Leon on 3G. Okay. Information reports. Have any questions, comments? Counselor Nordike, are you? No, okay.
No comment. I'm good.
Okay. Anyone? Okay. We'll move on then to second readings.
Ordinance Bill number 920, an ordinance relating to system development charges amending SRC 41.095, .097, .110, .120, .140, .150, and .160. Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer is absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. It's approved. Next one.
Ordinance Bill number 1020, an ordinance ratifying the creation of an intergovernmental entity. Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer's absent. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. That one passes as well. I don't see any further business. Okay, we're adjourned.